I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation's under God, indivisible, free, and just.
Well, it's very exciting to be here with our new high-tech recording system that I can see from here in the back room. A grant from Village Cable Franchise Funds. Right, so we have a whole new high-tech operation at no cost to the district, which is great, so hopefully anybody watching at home can see a much better picture and much better audio. And those of you who are frequent watchers would note that our mics were frequently going out, and hopefully that won't happen anymore with our spiffy mics here. So, we begin tonight -- oh, I just did something.
You lean closer to it, and then --
Yes, yeah. We begin tonight with our acceptance of agenda. So can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we then move to Chris's report. Dr. Harrison?
Well, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Nice to see everyone back and hope you had a restful, memorable holiday season. As Mr. Whitney indicated, we are high-tech tonight, and we are actually doing double diligence here to make sure that we -- the recording goes off well. We are recording the old-fashioned way, using our old camera as well as the new equipment, to make sure that we have a good recording for tonight, to make sure there are no glitches. As Mr. Whitney indicated, the updates in this room were paid for through grant money through the cable franchise, and I have to say and extend my thank you to the Village of Irvington for helping us facilitate this work. They're a great partner in this process. If you noticed, board members, as you were walking through the halls, you may have seen some large posters on the wall advertising the Innovation Fund. We talked a little bit about the Innovation Fund here once before, and it was a concept that I generated and talked about internally in the district with the administrative team, and then expanded conversation to some community groups. The idea of the Innovation Fund is a little bit of a different approach and a spin on the traditional education foundation grant or PTSA-type grant, where in those grant structures, we would have teachers or administrators who'd be able to apply for funding for opportunities in their respective schools to expand learning experiences for students. There's a little bit of a twist on this. This is a student-centered grant. It is a grant where our students have the opportunity to develop grant proposals to help enrich and expand their own learning experiences. In generating the grant concept, I spoke with the Education Foundation, who was very, very excited about partnering on this initiative. But we had to go a little bit further and obviously find some funding. So we took our journey down Main Street to Sunnyside Federal Bank and had conversations with the leadership there, and they also were very excited about the opportunity and have pledged to donate approximately $3,000 a year to the Ed Foundation to support this initiative. We also then -- I got a lead on a community member that was looking to do something exciting in the schools, and I met with him, and he's choosing to remain anonymous at this point in time. But after meeting with him and sharing the concept with him, he was very, very excited, and he has pledged $7,500 a year for three years. So when we're looking at moving forward, we're looking at approximately $10,500 a year at minimum for the next three years. So in our preparation, we had conversation then with our different grant partners, and IEF wrestled with how they wanted to roll it out and are going to create their own specific committee that's going to oversee this work. But before we rolled it out to kids, we were interested in getting feedback from students and teachers. So back before the holiday recess, I facilitated a focus group that had a number of students in attendance, at least a dozen students. We had some faculty members that came, IEF members came, and administrators were present. And it was pretty exciting. I have to tell you, not only did I first promoted it at CAB, Community Advisory Board, and students that were in the audience there started to ask a lot of questions and were excited. And some of those students then left that room and told friends, who then came to Dave Cohen and asked if they could get involved, or some of those students themselves went to Dave and asked about their participation. So students kind of found a way to invite themselves to the focus group. And we had tremendous dialogue. The kids were very, very excited, comments such as -- and Jesse was there for a good part of it, that, you know, "None of my friends have anything like this anywhere, and I can't wait to develop ideas, and I know a teacher that I might want to work with something on." And after we got through that initial phase of understanding what it was, kids gave us a lot of valuable feedback, looking first at the application process. And they were concerned that the application process, if too arduous, would turn kids away, and really dissuade kids that may have a good idea. And they wanted to take some ownership of it, which was really, really exciting. So with -- we're finalizing this week an application process whereby interested students are going to write a letter explaining their idea and the benefits of their idea that will go before the committee. If the committee thinks it's viable, then they'll be invited to complete an application, and IEF will provide assistance in writing the application as necessary. So that was something, direct result of the student feedback. And then the students, with respect to PR, they generated the flyers, the poster that's hanging, the kids created that themselves. I took the three, four-page document that I generated for the proposal and melded that down in one page. The kids took that and made a whole other flyer. They've set up information tables all week long. They have one that they're running in the atrium and one in the cafeteria each day. And the kids are real excited in promoting it. So at the end of this week, we're going to hold a meeting with students to launch it, answer their questions. We're hopeful that we're going to get a good turnout. Students suggest that we provide desserts to lower some here. So we're excited. We're looking to really empower our kids to have some impact on their learning environment, introduce some new ideas that could maybe start to change all of our thinking around some learning experiences. So we look forward to being able to hear more about the progress. I can tell you, in the grant itself, one of the requirements at the grant completion that the students need to come in and present to the Board of Education, so you'll hear directly from the students as to what they did and the benefits from their experience. So our hope is that this goes well, we'll be able to fine-tune our process, and then be able to expand it to other schools in coming years.
Just remind me again, when does the grant process start and end?
So we're -- it'll essentially be for the second semester. So there's a timeline, application timeline, that will be published, that we're going to look to award grants by, I forget, it was the 20th of February or something like that. So it's mid-February, and we'll run through the spring semester.
Okay.
Do you have a number that you're targeting, like five grants for two grandees?
No, I have decided they wanted to leave it a little open-ended, because they did not want to scare some kids away, because, you know, it could be a $500 grant, or it could be something that's a few thousand dollars. So that we saw this as a part of our learning curve in the first year to see if we need to frame it a little bit, to limit the size, or to leave it open-ended.
What happens with the money if we don't have enough grants to use all the money?
That the intent would be to roll that money forward for future years. And in that case, we hope that we're able to award a fair amount of money this year. But strategically, IAF may decide to carry some of that money forward to help with the expansion of the initiative down the road. I did want to provide the public with some bond updates. As we stated, as I stated in recent updates with the posting on the website, on Facebook, and our weekly newsletter, we're starting to receive some good news with our projects associated with the bond as they're moving through the state education department approvals process. We're hearing that they've all cleared that administrative-level approval and are going into the technical side of the approval. So thus far, you know, both architectural and field projects are progressing without any complications that we're aware of. Our architects and engineers are staying in contact with SED. Once we receive approval, we're going to begin to launch the respective RFE processes for each of the projects. So we will continue to post more information, and then the next week or two, I would imagine, that I'll share some more updates with the community. Also related to the bond, we're making plans for summer office space for Dow's Lane and district office because of the construction that's going to be going on there. The recreation summer camp is actually moving to Main Street School, so we've made arrangements and able to schedule that around the work that's being done at Main Street. So we're excited that that program will be able to occur. And then we're in conversations with community and other venues looking at already developed a strategy for what we're going to do with our fall athletics, recognizing that we know that Mizaros Field, as well as these fields, will now be available to us potentially for some period in the fall, depending on how construction goes. So we're beginning that very important planning process to make sure all those other issues outside of the responsibility to construction projects are certainly well-handled.
I guess maybe I didn't understand. So the work on Mizaros won't be done over the summer, I think. That would be my original understanding. I don't know what it was based on.
Yeah, so when you look at the scope of these projects, they are absolutely, it's feasible to manage them within a two-month period. But when you look around the state, around the region, at other school districts, other communities that have developed plans, sometimes they run longer. So we need to be able to develop contingency plans. So we are planning as if the fields wouldn't be ready. So if the fields are ready on September 1, that's fantastic. We're able to start using the fields. If the fields aren't ready, it's October 1, when we already have plans in place for where our students will be able to play and practice.
Okay.
Whether it becomes a problem, and that's happened in other school districts.
Yeah, and that's just you don't know.
Right.
Whether any foreseen construction issues that could arise, which we will knock on wood that we don't have any.
So it's really a contingency plan?
Yes, contingency planning.
Which certainly makes sense.
But there's a piece of it that obviously will be impacted if we're going to work during the summer, because we have to think of our fall athletes return the last two weeks of August typically for preseason training, but the field would not, certainly not be available during that period of time.
I was just going to ask, are there other repairs that were made around the buildings not significant during the break? Just wondering if you might be able to highlight those, or if you're planning to highlight those.
Yeah, I had it intended on it, but Beth, would you want to speak to the work that has been going on over, that occurred over?
Over the Christmas break.
Work that Gary did?
Yeah.
Yeah, Gary's team?
The staff, our own in-house staff, was very busy. They were very shorthanded, because a lot of them also took the winter break off. But the remaining staff, they were able to change a lot of the millwork and the sinks at Dow's Lane. They did nine rooms. They also were able to do heavy cleaning throughout the district and do the floor burnishing, waxing, as well as did some maintenance throughout the district.
So when we speak of the millwork, the picture of cabinetry and countertops in the elementary school, some of it was 50 years old, and it was delaminating. So we had, you know, commercial outfit come in and remove and install, but save money that our guys did a lot of the plumbing and installation of the sinks and the like. We also, here at the campus, we've always had a problem where the, when you think of, you have two schools that are using similar facilities, but in the event of an emergency, you would want to be able to communicate across schools. So when you would have, let's say if you had to order a lockdown because of a crisis in one school, you would have to make two separate announcements, because the intercoms didn't link. So we had very necessary work done to allow those to be able to connect with each other.
That's good.
So it's a very, I think, a very responsible move that we took. Also, in the atrium at the middle school, it's always been very, very dim in there. The lighting just was never sufficient, so we replaced it through the first floor in the lobby, all the hi-hat lighting that exists, we replaced with LED lighting, which makes it much, much brighter in there and more energy-efficient, of course.
Right, great.
So a lot was accomplished over those two weeks, even with our limited staff. So we're certainly proud of that. And other than some announcements, the last thing I would like to mention is that, as we've talked about before, there is a grant that the Village received through the Community Advisory Board, SAMSEC grant, which is a five-year, $125,000 a year grant designed to deliver anti-drug, alcohol, education, and awareness programming throughout the community. We are in the process, being on the steering committee, in the process of hiring an employee that's going to lead the charge for the Village on the grant. But one thing that I wanted to say, just to get the name out there, is that the group has come up with a name for the organization, I.A.S., so a lowercase i, ASK, so the play-off of the Apple products to make it kind of hip, and that stands for Irvington About Safe Kids. So hopefully, in the very near future, I know we're scheduling interviews for potential employees next week, and the Village will be able to identify and hire someone, and we can begin to plan and deliver some programming. CAB and I.A.S. also took out a full-page ad that was on the back page of the enterprise right before New Year's, if you happen to see that. So starting to get the voice and the message out there, which I think is important. And then finally, some upcoming events, that tomorrow we have the Main Street School Spelling Bee. There's an IEF meeting here tomorrow on Monday. Minor schools close for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Main Street School also, on Wednesday, the 21st, is a parent-child book club. And then on Thursday, the 22nd, is the Main Street School Winter Concert at the Theater of 7PM. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I remember that I have to amend the agenda here to accommodate our sick board member, Bob Brados, who's looking particularly peaked there. We're going to accelerate our consent agenda, Elaine, and take care of that. And then Bob is going to depart prior to the technology presentation. Apologies to Raina for that.
Well, he'll watch a very high-quality recording.
That's true.
That's right.
It'll be good. I'm sure you'll go home and watch that. It'll probably still be going on by the time you get home.
When he recovers. So enjoy it more when you're sleeping.
So we just want to move up the consent agenda and all the items associated with it, or maybe it's easier just to say to move the presentation to, from 5 to, to the end, to effectively --
Move that up to 12.
Right?
Five and six.
Five and six, yeah. Because we're moving up. 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. Right? Is that clear?
After 11.
We're just moving 5 and 6 to after 11. That's the easiest way to do it. So can I have a motion to accept that change to the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Maria seconded, Bob made the motion, all in favor. So we'll just do our consent agenda quickly here. So the consent agenda includes 8, 9, 10, 11, and I think that's it. So can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there anything that we want to talk about on the consent agenda?
What does it go through?
11.
11. So it does go through the --
11?
Yeah.
I just had a quick question on 11.
Sure.
With the settlement that we're doing, and it's a two-year payment, you know, the payment, that's two payments for the tax settlement that we're approving, do we have funds for that this year? Or are we looking to bond it?
No, we have funds available for this.
Say that again, hidden here. Maybe the light --
We have funds available to pay this year's.
So we're good for this year?
Okay.
And then we'll see next year? Thanks. That was the closest.
Okay. No other questions, and we'll vote. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the consent agenda passes. So that takes us back to our presentation.
Comments from the community?
You're welcome. Oh, yeah, very funny. There are comments from the community as agenda item, but since we have no community here.
Elaine!
Jesse, he's a member of our community. So yes, we're on to the technology presentation. And to remind people, I think our last presentation was June 3, 2014. So this is an update, and we look forward to hearing from Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core.
Just a little bit to you, of course.
Oh, pardon me, sorry, Jesse.
So we're working with some new technology here, too, and a new clicker. To begin, when we think about providing presentations like this, I almost feel like it's important for us to put an apology up front to some degree, because we recognize that the board has heard some of this information before. But we also have to be considerate of our viewers at home. They may sit down and pull up an agenda and review the PowerPoint. That I think there's some importance to look at the structure that we provide, and that there's a little bit of replication once in a while to try to ensure that we're giving a complete picture. So to the board, we apologize, and to folks at home that may review the presentation, we hope that you appreciate the information. So as we look at where we're going tonight, and as the title slide indicated, technology moving forward, we want to step back and we want to focus on some of our progress and our work that was done. If we think back to June, we talked about the good work that was going on in our district, highlighted a lot of the exciting programs, the enriching experiences that our children are enjoying. But we also started to talk about the work that we're going to do this year. So tonight, we want to spend some time to highlight our progress. We want to provide examples of how we've been planning through the process which we've discussed along the way. We're going to demonstrate our progress. We're going to talk about some things that have occurred instructionally. We're going to talk about things that have happened in curriculum. We're going to talk about how we're looking at building capacity of our employees to be able to deliver more technology, rich infrastructure, and of course, some advancements in infrastructure. In doing so, we're going to share what our thinking is for the future. So there's, read into that recommendation, board members. We're going to outline opportunities for program growth. We're going to commit to building teacher capacity, and we recognize that ultimately, we're going to provide our students with rich experiences that are going to prepare them for their future. This is the wrong presentation, Elaine. Pardon?
It's, the correct one is called revised, right?
Yeah.
This is the data.
This is not the correct one.
You could also go to, you could go to board docs.
You know what, I was putting it in board docs.
You can use mine.
No, you don't.
See, I have, thank you.
I need to replace this.
Just do it. Just type that look in the search box.
Where's my name? I don't understand this show.
There you go.
My apologies. So in doing so, it was evident that a vision was evolving, a vision that spoke to what we wanted to go and what we knew we needed to do. So in doing so, we're looking at our belief that all students should possess essential technology skills and participate in critical technology learning experiences that will equip them for success in our schools and prepare them for the challenges of their future. So in doing so, we think about how we inform this work, how we guide this work, and it clearly supports the district goals and our theories of action. And it's going to be delivered through the lens of the technology framework that we've introduced along the way. So tonight, Dr. Core, Mr. Lubinski, and I are going to spend time outlining what that vision looks like. And we're going to talk about the actionable steps that we want to take to identify the steps that we've already taken. In doing so, we want to clearly define goals and expectations for the use and integration of technology. We want to think about courses and curriculum to increase that integration of technology, so thinking about those types of experiences that we can extend to kids, aside from just integration of looking at technology in individual classes, but the teaching of technology. We want to increase the alignment with technology standards. We want to increase communication among teachers and allow them opportunities to plan, not only with their colleagues in an immediate department or grade level, but looking vertically through our schools as well. We know we need to step back and reevaluate our software use currently, what we're using, and consider what software may benefit student learning in the future. We want to think about the use of mobile devices. Think about the professional learning that is needed for our teachers to make sure that they're able to deliver a high-quality program and do so confidently. And then, again, we always have to think about how infrastructure informs that kind of work, and needs to be able to support that work as we move along.
So, Dr. Core?
Okay, so good evening, everyone. So I'm going to take us through this middle part of the presentation, and this whole idea of planning and development. So last year, we talked a little bit in the framework about this idea of a technology leadership team. So the ETDT, the Educational Technology Development Team, is a group of teachers, students, and administrators who have started to meet on a regular basis. And the idea behind the ETDT is they are a team of educators who are meeting on a regular basis, but they also are the representatives at the building level. At each building, the building principals have developed a technology committee, and so the members that come to the K-12 committee are on that committee as well. And so we are always working to have an appropriate implementation at the building level. What something looks like at Dow's Lane is very different than what it would look like at the middle school or the high school. But what we want to ensure is that we have a common understanding of where we're going as a district and what our expectations are for students and obviously, teachers. In addition, we were very pleased, and we believe in the idea of a technology think tank that includes our community members. We were in our two previous think tanks. We had some community members come, and it was a huge help for us in thinking it through. We also had students as part of that process. And for the district-level committee, we will be adding some high school students as well. So in the technology framework that we shared with you in June, we had identified eight district goals. And in November, we held a week-long technology summit. And when we, what we took, what we did in the summit was we met with teachers and administrators, and we worked through each part of the framework, and we worked through each goal. And our purpose was to determine, A, if the goal was written in a way that made sense for our school district, in a way that we thought would lead to a successful implementation of these goals, and did the goals align with what we saw as our future in Irvington. So we purposely left, we purposely put this slide up this way. Originally, in the framework, we had eight goals, and Goal 5 was BYOD. And through the process of ETDT, with ETDT, with Technology Committee meeting, as well as the summit, where we had teachers from all schools working together, K through 12, we really discovered and determined that bring your own device is something that we are working on right now, and it is very important right now. And we are unpacking it and figuring it out, and trying to decide how to make it work, and dealing with some of the issues that go along with it. But everyone felt that it really was a moment in time, BYOD. So it was important, it needed to be dealt with, it needed to be developed. But it wasn't a goal in and of itself. And when you look at the technology framework plan, mobile student-centered computing was really the overhead, the umbrella, for where BYOD would sit. So the committee, as well, the district-wide committee, as well as the teachers who worked on that goal, all agreed that Goal 5 should not really be its own goal. It should sit under Technology Goal 1. So as a result, the revised version of our plan will reflect the seven goals and not eight. Over the course of the summit, we met for three hours each, for each goal, and we worked through not only the goal and its purpose, but also what that would look like for students and teachers. And in a couple of slides, I'm going to share with you some of the details around that.
Just, I had a question about electronic resources, I think.
I'm sorry.
Electronic resources.
About that?
What does that mean as a goal?
Oh, so that, it's so interesting that you say that, because actually, when we put that in, we thought one thing, and then through the process of developing the goal, we changed. So originally, electronic resources, I would say, five years ago, really people thought of databases and library electronic resources. But really, what we discovered is that whole thinking has changed. And electronic resources can be anything and everything that we might access that would in some way support -- would in some way support learning, from websites, subscription services, anything and everything that falls under this now, what's a giant umbrella.
Okay.
So, but we had a very long discussion about that. Action steps. So in looking and developing the framework in the spring and launching for this year, our goal was to say, so now what? How do we move forward in what we really see happening in our classrooms? And so our goal is to develop the skills of our teachers so that they are integrating technology in their classroom. That we want to be part and parcel. One of the most recent conversations we had, I want to say it was our December meeting, actually, with the technology district-wide committee, was we talked about this idea of does everybody need the same thing? So it used to be that you developed a model. Everybody should have three computers, a smartboard, and a document camera. That's what every classroom should have. But really, what we're learning is it doesn't really work that way anymore. Different teachers need different things based on their content area, based on their skill, based on their application. And so what we're really trying to determine is what skills do teachers need to have that then would apply to whatever resources make sense in that classroom and what those do need. So our action steps include really considering what should we be thinking about in terms of the needs of teachers, not just software, but where can we put different types of hardware? Developing sequences of technology courses. We have clearly determined over time, certainly, I know, Robyn, you and I have had a conversation about Project Lead the Way, and what are we making available to our students? What does a sequence look like? If you have a student who's interested in something, how do we know what their path can be? How do we engage students who don't realize they may be interested in it? How do we ensure the opportunity for students? So we're looking at enriching our curriculum using STEM as our baseline. Many school districts have a STEM curriculum. They have a very, when you ask them, what do you do to implement STEM in your district? There's an answer, a clear path that is followed. So we're working really hard to make sure that in Irvington, we provide that as well. And then, of course, to continue to build out the infrastructure and support. We've done a lot with not a lot of increase in our infrastructure. We have been in a maintenance mode for a very long time with a few added pieces, and yet, I think we've tried to build that, and I think in June, you saw there are pockets of a lot of good integration. So what do we do, how do we move forward? And again, we're looking through these three lenses of the integration of technology, the technology curriculum, which is taught by the technology teachers, and professional learning so that teachers have the capacity to integrate technology in their classrooms. So this links back to the development of those seven framework goals. So during the technology summit, what we looked at was how do we identify standards that align to what classroom really look like? What are kids doing and what are teachers doing? What are those two things? Well, in order to have a set of standards or a set approach in a district, you need a set of standards. And we had shared with you that the ISTI standards have been around a very long time. They are reliable in terms of their development and implementation in many, many school districts across the world, not just in the United States. And so what we're showing you here is a model. So this is just one example from Technology Goal Six, and that goal is around the integration of curriculum, curriculum integration with technology. On the left, what you're seeing is here's what we would like to see teachers doing in their classrooms. We would like to see teachers demonstrating an awareness of knowledge of their respective technology-integrated curriculum. So in other words, when you walk into a classroom, that teacher is integrating technology in appropriate ways for that curriculum. If we see that, then we would also expect to see students using technology in productive ways to improve learning. So not just using technology, but actually using technology in a way that supports their growth as learners and somehow enhances that curriculum to make it both more engaging and more accessible. So that's what a classroom would look like. But for teachers, we need a way to make sure that we can communicate that to teachers in third, who teach third grade, as well as teachers who are teaching 10th grade social studies globally. So in order to do that, we connected it to those ISTI standards. So if a teacher is going to be demonstrating that kind of awareness, if you read the standard, the standard is design and develop digital age learning experiences. So that means, oh, I'm a teacher, I need to rethink how I'm designing that lesson. So my lesson has to reflect the technology integration so that that's what you would see when you walk in the classroom, and ultimately, it's always about what are our students doing? So that's the link. The standards relate to what the teachers are doing, and the teachers, what they design relates to what the students are doing. So for each one of our goals, we are defining the standards as well as those observable behaviors. And that is what is going to be developed at each building level at an age-appropriate In addition to the ISTI standards for teachers, we have the ISTI standards for students. In June, what we had not done yet is we had not identified which observable behaviors go with which standard. So we had identified some of the observable behaviors, which we've since changed, but we had not linked them yet. We knew we wanted to link them to the ISTI standards, but we had not done that. Now we have linked the ISTI standards to each of those goals. So as I talked about a couple of minutes ago with STEM education, the idea behind science, technology, engineering, and mathematics is at the heart of what people see as the future. And I think that any one of us here who has been looking or watching, and we know, we don't know what the jobs are going to be. People love to say, we don't know what the jobs are going to be, but what we do know is we need to educate our students' thinkers. And we need to be capturing students at an early age and ensuring that they are provided with experience. To date, most of our technology program, at the elementary school especially, has been around the integration of applications, Microsoft Office, Word, PowerPoint. We're not saying that those are not important, but that's not what STEM is about. STEM is about developing a curriculum around thinking and application. So several, many years ago at this point, I guess I want to say it's seven years ago, we began Project Lead the Way, and we started with a single course at our high school. One of the areas of focus for us is to build out our program. And the Project Lead the Way program, over the years, has developed both a middle school approach as well as an elementary approach to implementing STEM curriculum. So what I'd like to do tonight is share with you our thinking. After a team of us went to a conference in Saratoga Springs, at Saratoga Springs High School, we were able to see the implementation of PLTW at all levels. So PLTW has an elementary program called Launch, a middle school program called Gateway, and then their high school program. Launch is a K-5 program, and in examining the program as well as our infrastructure, we started to think about what's possible. Currently, we have one computer teacher who is responsible for teaching, I guess, 750, I don't know what our elementary numbers are, about 750. So we have one elementary technology teacher responsible for teaching 750 students. So when we looked at that, we said, well, is that a viable model? And we also said, well, what is it we really want our students to know when they are students? So currently, our younger students, our K through two students, are using programs like KidPicks. KidPicks?
KidPicks.
That's the kind of program that a classroom teacher could be using and teaching in the sense that students would be using that to write stories, to create images. And that's not really, doesn't require the expertise of a technology teacher. That's something that with some support and training, our teachers can use and have as part of their classroom instruction. In addition, at the K-2 level, with the implementation of foundations, we also felt that there's a lot going on there, and we thought, is that the place for our technology teacher to be doing that work? And do we want to start that early if we were to look at a program like Launch? And through that conversation, we felt that the most appropriate place to probably begin our STEM approach, with the expectation that we would eventually expand down to K through two, but our starting point seemed to be three and four. And the reason why we think Launch at grades three and four makes the most sense is two reasons. One, we are consistently trying to build our bridges between our schools. So having a program that would begin in third and down, and then go into Main Street School, taught by our technology teacher in both buildings, seemed like a viable approach. In addition, in our fifth-grade program, two of our existing units are already STEM-based in many ways. And so the idea behind this is the Launch program for every grade, K through five, is four modules. And their modules, the modules are based, and we give you this, I'm sharing the examples of the fourth, third grade, and the fourth, fourth grade. I can also give you the other grade levels as well, but our thinking is to work in third and fourth. One of the things that you'll also notice if you've had a third or fourth grade or go through the program, these also are very aligned with our science curriculum, some of them. And so the other advantage would be that they would align with science and the next-generation science standards, which they've now leveraged to a certain degree. So the Launch program is the elementary program, and our recommendation is looking at third and fourth, and that the technology teacher would be responsible for teaching some of these units, and we're not sure yet if it would be all four for each grade. She would also continue to teach the fifth grade for some of the units. Moving into middle school, the middle school program is called the Gateway Program, and it's called that because it's really seen as the beginning steps for preparation for a school. There are two foundation units, design and modeling, and automation and robotics. Design and modeling, we're recommending bringing into the seventh-grade curriculum. Currently, our eighth-grade curriculum has a robotics module, and so although their module is different for PLTW, we've invested a lot, or the IEF has invested a lot in us, our teacher, and the training and the development, and it's going well. And so for our Launch, what we would look at is the design and modeling in seventh grade. The other area that we looked at, for some of you, you might remember that we used to have exploratory in eighth grade, and the specialization units is something that we talked about with David and Allison in terms of that this would be another way to possibly offer short, these are 10 weeks as well, just short 10-week exploratories that would possibly tap into the specialization units, one of them. And that would be selected based on the middle school and their next steps and thinking for which one would make the most sense.
And who would teach design and modeling?
The technology teachers. So either, right now, Marcus Oates and Diana Cassidy are our technology teachers at the middle school.
Same for the exploratory-ish classes for eighth?
It would be one, yes, it would have to be one of them. So PLTW at the high school. So we're really excited that we are branching back out into this conversation around PLTW and its potential in our high school. As I think you know, Patsy Costabile has been teaching our Intro to Engineering course. PLTW requires the foundation courses. The other thing that we can consider, although I would not say for next year, but maybe down the road, is we could consider making one of the foundation courses an eighth, part of our eighth-grade program, which means that every student would accelerate and go into our high school with that foundational knowledge. We're not ready to go there yet, but this is the kind of looking and visioning that we're thinking about, the potential, opening the doors for opportunity for our high school students to have, branch off into the different areas within PLTW. So as you can see, the biomedical science, and that's the area that we're hoping to expand into for September as an opportunity, and then the computer science, is there other area of focus? Always at the high school, and I know you know this, always at the high school, we always have to look at how much are we offering, what, you know, how many different electives can there be? Who can teach them? The biomedical science would be taught by a science teacher, unlike our Intro to Engineering, which is taught by a Patsy who's a certified department teacher and has an architecture background. Dave and Deb, along with the guidance department, are looking really hard at this idea of sequencing and making sure that we have things available for students in a given year or every other year. So one of the approaches that Dave and Deb are working on is this idea of running a sequence so that everyone knows this is when it's available. So you can't run every elective every year. We don't have the students to do that, but we can provide the sequence so that students know, I can take this this semester, and I can take that next semester, I can take that in September. So the PLTW high school is something that we are looking to build out over time and to determine which is the best area of focus for us. We see our Launch program at the elementary, our Gateway program at the middle, eventually informing our thinking so that we know how we should be building our high school program because we're building that knowledge base in our students from much earlier grades. Right now, we don't know it early enough. So Jesse is going to talk about professional learning and make some other connections.
Good evening. In addition to some of the things we've already talked about, we've made some progress on some other fronts with regards to professional learning, so this is an opportunity to highlight some of those. And the first one, actually, is something we started to touch on, which was the development of the building-level technology committees. So we already talked about that we had ETDT, which was our district-level committee. And really, and Dr. Core referenced this earlier, the goal of that building committee is really to flesh out some of the different needs that we've identified at the building level. So what we realized in a previous iteration, our technology committee that was a district-level committee, really looked at things from an overall perspective, but not necessarily at some of the specific needs that were coming from the buildings. And as those conversations have started to happen, we've realized that there's definitely a different approach that needs to happen in each building. So the building-level committees are made up of the building administration, the members of the ETDT who are from that building, as well as other teachers who don't serve on the ETDT but want to be part of the technology planning process. And some of the items that they're looking at are listed here. Identifying needs at the building level through surveying faculty and staff, both formally and informally. Developing and identifying professional learning specific to needs. N S D's to professional development needs with regards to technology at the building levels. Supporting professional learning as deemed necessary. And also, and this is a key part that ties in to what we just spoke about with Project Lead the Way, but providing the necessary Project Lead the Way training for lead teachers. That's one piece, I don't know if you touched on it, I just missed it with the modules, is the training required for each of those modules is pretty intensive, which is another challenge to rolling out a large number of initiatives with regards to those modules up front. Because of the training time involved and the fact that a teacher needs to be sent away for training and the support that goes along with initially starting those modules, it really requires a tiered approach to roll out. The other thing that we've, and we discussed this last year, but we've taken some steps forward, is our approach to Google Apps for Education. So we spoke about this last year when we were talking about the Chromebooks and how the district recognized that it wanted to make a commitment toward the integration of Google Apps for Education throughout the school district. One of our first moves this year was in creating our district-level committees, our professional development teams. We created a Google Apps for Education professional development team with staff members from each of the buildings as part of a core group of educators who are going to be provided with support and training so that they can in turn go be leaders in their own buildings. can in turn go be leaders in their own buildings, uh, in Google Apps for Education. Before that, I should actually mention that over the summer, we had also talked about that we'd started that Quad Village, uh, professional development initiative, and over the summer, we actually expanded the offerings to include a large Google Bootcamp, where we had, uh, eight targeted classes around different topics within the Google App suite, which were taught by, uh, from our district, myself, and then, uh, leaders from, uh, Dobbs Ferry Hastings and Ardsley, and we'd actually started to expand the offerings there as well. And those courses are offered now to schools. Over the summer, a lot of lead people are actually looking to expand those offerings for the spring and summer. We began rolling out, uh, Google Apps in earnest over the fall to students and staff at the K-12 levels, uh, and many of our internal processes as far as document creation and collaboration are now currently Google Apps. That Google Apps PD team, after identifying those, having an initial kickoff meeting in October, um, members of that team actually attended, or were offered the opportunity to attend a day at the Hudson Valley Google Summit, which was located, uh, which was running up in New York, and were able to meet with, uh, regional, um, teachers who, and see best practices that were going on in other districts, as well as get some, uh, fundamental learning about various topics and see some of the PD models that were in place in other districts. Once they came back in-house, we did a one-day baseline training, full-day training, we ran two sessions, I ran those with the team, and did a full-day-long training with them, so that we could ensure that every member of the team had a consistent baseline in terms of their understanding of Google Apps. And our next step is, we're in the process of being to create Google-level, building-level PD plans for Google Apps, um, in terms of what supports will be in place, what each building is looking to do at a very targeted and specific, um, focus. In terms of our infrastructure, we didn't want to, again, kind of, uh, reframe, I guess, oh, no. What we're talking about when we, when we use the infrastructure, and then talk about what changes have occurred since the last meeting, and where we're kind of headed. So, again, when we're talking about infrastructure, we need both hardware and software, but within those two, um, within both hardware and software, it's not just a matter of infrastructure from a system standpoint, but also in terms of how it impacts, uh, teaching and learning. So you can see under hardware, while we still have servers as well as the Wi-Fi network that we've started to develop, there's also the tools that we use for teaching and learning, such as the smart boards, the document cameras, as well as other devices that we have in the classrooms for, for learning. And on the software side, we can talk about software budget, people tend to think of pure software, but we've really moved to more a subscription model, um, services that provide us with access to technology that we need from a software standpoint, as well as those systems that we have to have in place, uh, in order for us to just run our daily operations, such as E-School Plus, which is our, um, student information system, and the components that go along with that, such as Home Access Center, as well as, uh, Finance Manager and the other systems that, uh, we use behind the scenes, so to speak. Now, uh, this is the hardware that we currently have in place. If you take a look back to our presentation from last year, there are some changes, so I'll just highlight those. We added 20 physical desktops, that was really just the addition of making sure that the library at Dows Lane was, had enough machines for a full class. And the Chromebooks from the Chromebook pilot were added to our additional mobile device number here. So those Chromebooks that were, that were used in that pilot last year have now been rolled out at, on the campus level with the additional purchase of three Chromebook carts, which can hold a full class set of Chromebooks, and those are now being used in conjunction with our Google Apps deployment. So that's been one way that we've been able to really push our use of Google Apps, is through the use of those, uh, Chromebook devices by our teachers in the classrooms. Current status of wireless, last year, we listed that as, um, as a coverage model, and we're now in a saturation model. So, we have basically installed wireless everywhere on campus, as opposed to last year where there were still some dead zones. We also reinforced the areas that were also, um, that were already active, but just made sure that there was more access to Wi-Fi, um, access points in those areas.
To find campus, I'm sorry? Just, when you say the campus, which schools do you mean?
The high school and the middle school, as well as the theater, and the, the.
Just up here, you don't mean Main Street School or anything else?
No, I'll talk about that.
Just up here.
I'll talk about that in a minute. So yeah, we did not have existing Wi-Fi in those buildings, so the plan was to reinforce this location for existing Wi-Fi.
Yeah, 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 I just wanted, I didn't know what you meant by campus.
Can you just explain one other term on that line? What is the difference between coverage and saturation?
So, coverage means that you can ensure that you'll get a Wi-Fi signal in an area, but it may not, it may not be able to support a large, a large number of users in that space. Saturation means that we can handle a large number of users, as well as just ensuring coverage. Now, we were in a coverage model, but for portions of the campus, so there were still areas like the campus theater and the cafeteria, which hadn't, or the atrium, which had no coverage at all. Now, we're in a saturation model throughout the campus, where you can, where there's coverage, as well as, um, the ability to handle a large number of users. There's also been a change to the bandwidth number, so, um, we were previously at 50 megabits per second to the internet, we've now raised that to 100 in anticipation of students using wireless devices. Just for some historical context on that, back to 2012, we were at 7.
7?
7.
Wow.
So, and actually, it was 10, but there's three that is actually dedicated to audio, so technically, that's 97, not 100. But, we've gone up tenfold, and we're still thinking that, we're seeing that that's enough. So, rather than take the, you know, going over and saying, let's jump to 150 right away, we're going to wait and see what the impact is at 100, and we could always make that move up to 150 if we have to. But it just gives you some idea, you know, when we talk about internet bandwidth, and the types of media and content that teachers are using in that classroom to help drive instruction, what the requirements, what the, the needs are in the classroom. So, whereas previously, we operated with 10, we've recognized, we were already capped out at the 50, we're jumping to 100 and seeing where we'll go from there. But it's just interesting, we think only a few years back, we were 10 times less, so. In terms of expanding the infrastructure, so this was a slide that we actually had last year. So if you compare it to the slide last year, the technology lease amount for the upcoming year, 2015, 16, that dollar amount was actually a little bit more. What we currently have it slated at is 360,000. Now, what that will, that, what that would include is the wireless infrastructure for Dows Lane and Main Street, so that was what Ron, I think, was referring to a minute ago, as well as our annual replacement cycle for smart boards, protectors, and printers. Finishing the replacement of Main Street School machines, there was a chunk of machines that we didn't replace during this year's cycle, that we were able to identify that we can wait one more year on those. What we are not doing for the upcoming year is doing our annual replacement cycle of desktops. So the machines that would normally be replaced at the end of the five-year period, we're, we're confident that the performance of those machines, that we could stretch them out for one more year while we still anticipate long-term, um, purchasing implications, rather than buy another set of machines now, determining what direction we want to head with regards to the, the types of devices we want. So, as we're starting to have those conversations at the building levels for what those needs are, it would be better to have a plan in place for what that should look like, as opposed to just continuing with our purchasing cycle as-is. So we're giving ourselves enough leeway to be able to, um, still purchase some devices, which as you can see, we're still planning on the purchase of 180 Chromebooks and, uh, six carts for next year. We're just not going to continue with the desktop purchasing until we're sure what that model will look like.
180 for the campus, or for high school and middle school?
Well, distribution to be determined, but ideally, we're putting wireless infrastructure in place at, uh, at Dows and Main Street, so.
Could be across the whole district.
Correct. Additionally, and this is a really key point, um, and this actually ties into why Wi-Fi is, uh, why, doing the wireless infrastructure at Dows and Main Street is so critical, is because of the upcoming part, uh, requirements that we anticipate as far as online testing. So, we are going, if the plan that's currently out there stays in place, we're going to be required to be able to test, to be able to test students in a wireless environment with devices, which actually is kind of that magic number that we have there, that's our largest grade plus 10%, which would actually be the number of machines we would need if we were, if we were to have to do online testing next year. So, ensuring that the district is in a wireless model and having those machines is, is, is essential, basically, if that goes into place.
Yep. So I guess one footnote that I would like to add, when we think about, when we go back to thinking about, looking at infrastructure hardware purchases for next year, um, we, there's Smart Schools grant money that's available through the state bond initiative. Uh, so Irvington is eligible for approximately $277,000. So we believe that we'll be able to apply some of those funds to, uh, this purchase. The complicated part here is, um, I guess there's two layers to it. One, that was voted upon, obviously, back in November, uh, they still have not released the requirements, and the outbreak process that we have to go through to acquire those funds. So we know there's particular standards. The idea of building out wireless environment, um, increasing access for students, all fit the different standards. Interactive learning is another component, so when we look at what is embodied within those objectives for infrastructure and hardware for next year, it ties directly to that. So when we look at that $277,000, that takes a big hit on that $360,000, if it's applicable. The one other area that we have as a challenge for us, and is to be able to discuss further during the budget process, as the board is familiar, that we have a technology lease, where we're always kind of a year ahead of where we're going to be. So we identify what our technology purchases are, we go through a leasing process, and we don't actually begin that first lease payment until the following year. We've been advised that we should be looking at a different model, um, and so in doing so, we might be able to start to restructure how we're doing this and be able to bring those costs back into our budget. So, um, it's one of the objectives that Beverly is working on, and it'll be nice if we're able to marry that with the Smart Schools money, to be able to lessen a hit to the general fund. So when we think about those next steps, we've had this conversation or presentation this evening, and certainly open up the dialogue that we know we're going to have, that'll be so important. But we also know that this is kind of leading and inferring some discussion that we're going to have related to, uh, budget planning. So you're going to see aspects of this come out, you're going to hear it from Randy, you're going to hear it from Joyce, David, and Dave, as they talk to you in two weeks, thinking about what, uh, what they're working on in their schools and what they see as their next steps. You're going to see it as a part of the curriculum budget, when formally presented in technology as well. When we talk about, uh, integration of, of technology standards, um, that's going, there's going to be some implications there for budget as well. We think of our professional learning, um, you know, there's costs associated with certain things, so I think if we're going to roll out Project Lead the Way, um, there's institutes that we have to send a couple teachers to over the summer, and we have to buy some supporting materials to be able to deliver the program, and of course, the hardware and infrastructure issues that we discussed before. But in sum, I, I think, when we, we think about where we are and where we've been, um, over a period of time that Dr. Core, Mr. Vinsky, and I've been working together, in two and a half years, we've seen a tremendous movement in the area of technology. When we think about our district-wide technology team, when we think about the building-level teams, how many times we've met in this room, the district-level folks, and they're here volunteering their time, energy, ideas, expertise after school. We think about the work at the building level, these are people that are coming to the table excited. After we had the summit, you should have heard the buzz that was building, and people starting to make connections and identify opportunities, and seeing one another as resources. So there's been a tremendous movement here in the district, but I want to be clear, this isn't coming back to anything about just for the sake of teaching technology. It's about increasing opportunities for kids, giving teachers tools, to allow students to access different types of information and have different types of learning experiences. So through this process, with our technology framework, the work that we've gone through in the first portion of this year, we've created structures that have guided and really informed the decision. Decisions and recommendations that we're making and discussing with you tonight, we've started to develop some plans for curriculum enhancement, developing course sequences, as Raina indicated before, and really looking to equip our faculty with the skills to be able to move forward. You know, the specifics here, and I'm not going to repeat them, it's something that, that we have focused on, and I think is alive and well in each of our schools. This is an area of progress for us. We have moved big time, within a short period of time, to see where we were in 2012, to see where we were September of this year. It's pretty impressive to see the work that is accomplished, but we recognize that this is a part of the process, that it's a learning experience for us, and that these experiences will continue to, to inform our next steps. But we're proud of what we've done, and we think that there's a lot of opportunity to introduce great experiences for our kids. But with that said, uh, we'll be quiet and allow you to do some talking for a little bit. So, Mr. Whitney, however you'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core, Mr. Vinsky. I'm sure everybody has a plethora of questions, correct?
Yes.
Depends on how you define plethora, I guess.
A lot.
Yeah, I'm anxious to.
Is everybody ready to dive in? Shall I start? I'm happy to cede to the end, as we often do. John, do you want to start?
Um, if you want. Let me try to work from specific to general, I guess. I just have to go back through my, the notes I jotted. So, bear with me a second.
If you need a moment, I have a very specific question I can ask, while.
Okay, go ahead.
I had a question about Chromebooks. So the, there's 80 Chromebooks right now in our district, is that correct, or am I not remembering that correctly?
100.
100.
100.
It's a little, it's a few more 100s that have been specially purchased.
Right. And those Chromebooks are used, um, in specific classrooms, or they just kind of get used generally?
Teachers use it in, 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 or, or classrooms.
I see. So it's not necessarily like one class will always be using Chromebooks?
No.
They might use it to, for a particular, um, for a particular coursework or something. Right. Yep. The kids, so they use the, they use the Chromebooks in, in the class, they don't take them home because they go back into the cart. Right, okay. And those experiences are largely about, um, a collaborative sort of teaching experience, because the point of a Chromebook with Google Apps is that people can kind of share their work at the same time and work on something simultaneously and add to it.
I think the nature of, of how they're being used varies from class to class, but because those devices require the time of Google Apps for Education accounts, you're seeing more, more, if, if.
Do we want to have them go to the mic on this, because I don't know if this is going to come through?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we?
I mean, but I can hear you fine, but I'm not sure that.
Hold that one since Raina and I are mic'd here.
Right. Sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure you're recorded for posterity.
Right.
So what I was saying was, it differs from the laptop cart experience, because those devices are, require Google Apps for Education accounts, so the work does differ, because, has to differ because of it, because it ties in with Google Drive and all the different apps that come with that. So some, so teachers are leveraging those tools when, uh, developing the use of those devices in the classroom.
And, sorry, just two more questions related to Chromebooks in particular.
Sure.
Do you have a sense that the Chromebooks are being utilized heavily, so that they're always booked? I mean, because obviously.
They were being booked before we even had the cart ready to roll out, so we had them in carts and knew that they were being used.
And then part of the thinking of adding 180 more is that that will increase capacity so that people, when they try to book the cart, will now have more Chromebooks to use?
Yes, I think, I mean, part of it is, we're going to have additional locations that require devices. I can tell you the distribution of those carts right now, the three on campus, one's dedicated to middle school, one's dedicated to high school, the other one is in the science wing and can be moved around from there, but yes, ultimately, to have more devices available for use.
To create more capacity, so that when someone tries to book them and discovers that they're out, that, right. And then, are there courses that they're associated with primarily science and math courses, or does it kind of run the gamut?
Runs the gamut.
Because if you're doing something in English, or let's say, um, in, in, in social studies, history, that would be more using like PowerPoint or a Word doc, as opposed to a spreadsheet. history, that would be more using like PowerPoint or a Word doc as opposed to a spreadsheet.
Collaborative writing.
Collaborative.
A lot of collaborative writing.
Right, so it'd be done through a document.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
I mean, really, yes and no. I mean, I think you could find use for each of the apps in any of the areas, so I don't know if it really delineates itself that clearly, but yeah.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I don't have your time. Well, I guess time's over.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to the Chromebooks?
Absolutely.
Are there any plans down the road to incorporate the use of Chromebooks at the lower grades?
I'm sorry, what?
To use Chromebooks at the lower grades.
I thought they were being put in the lower grades.
I think that's part of what the thought is behind the purchasing for next year. I think ultimately, if we're talking about, we talked about how we're holding off on purchasing our normal cycle of desktop replacement computers. Part of the thought is that, once that wireless infrastructure is in place at the lower levels, giving teachers the ability to utilize those devices gives them more ideas about what they can do in their classrooms with those types of devices and informs purchasing decisions for future years. So I would definitely say that that's part of our plan.
I thought you had said that there was going to be a cart or two in Main Street and Dow's Lane.
Correct. Exactly.
Shall I go?
Yes.
Yes, please. I have kind of more, I guess, not so specific questions, but sort of reflections and bigger picture, kind of big think questions. And maybe this is kind of a rhetorical question a little bit, but I guess my question, and I'm more focused on the teaching of technology or STEM or what have you, rather than the use of technology, because they're really, to me, two very different issues. One's a means to an end educationally, and one's really the technology, using technology in education, and one is really the end, which is taking seriously STEM as something we think the students should be taught. Question to back up rhetorically, what is it we are trying to do? What are we trying to do with this education? Are we trying to create well graduates who are well-equipped to go on to higher education where they would deal with, they would have, do engineering or scientific or computer science-related applications? Or are we after something else? Because I think the answer to that question would help inform what the right educational approach is. And that kind of leads me to the question of, you know, in STEM, we've done half of that forever. I did S and M, and we didn't call it that, obviously, but we had science and math. And, you know, it seems like arguably a very strong and reinforced education in science and math would be what people need to go on to do more engineering and other technological things in university settings and in even graduate school after that. And teaching a little bit of biomedical science, for example, without, in the high school, may not be the most effective way to prepare people for really serious careers, the kind of careers I hope we're trying to train people for. So I guess it's kind of a question of what we're trying to do with the STEM. And, you know, I would really like to see a very serious discussion of our science curriculum and our mathematics teaching and whether those things are up to the level we think they should be if we really are taking seriously all of this belief about the need to prepare students for a more technological future. Okay? So I want to hear thoughts about that, not necessarily tonight, but over time. You look puzzled. No? Okay, you're just, okay. So do I have anything else? I think it would be helpful to know for the different Project Lead the Way initiatives that you outlined, the third grade, fourth grade, middle school particularly, where those are going to be required parts of the curriculum. They're not, high school, it's an elective, I guess, right? But it'd be helpful to know how much student time we're talking about for the.
Ten-week modules.
What, 10 weeks for how much, well, okay, but how much, how many hours are they going to be?
It's in there, it's the technology program, so you know how your children have gone through the technology rotations at each grade levels?
Uh-huh, okay. So that would be there.
Seven, one rotation.
I see, so we're not changing the amount of time.
Is it going to replace the technology, is it going to replace something else?
It would be the, it would become the technology, part of the technology curriculum. So it would replace something that they're currently doing.
Okay.
Or be part of, I should say.
In sixth and seventh and eighth grade?
No. Seventh grade.
Seventh.
Seventh grade.
Designs, yeah. I thought seventh-grade technology is driven by state standards.
Yes. And all of these modules are designed around state standards.
There's a lot of ways to meet the state standards. Okay. So in other words, the going away from the building of the bridges, this is going to morph into something a little different.
Exactly. So it would be, so we'd still be meeting those state standards as well as some of the next-gen science standards, as well as some of our math standards.
Maybe it would be helpful, and again, we can't do it tonight, to line up what we're doing today or this 2014, 15, what we'll be doing next year, so we can see the change from one year to the next. This is what we taught in technology this year, this is what we, and then, as you said, I think in the high school, right, as you contemplate those additional courses, that you're not planning to roll all of those out, right? That's a very big undertaking. So what would it look like in 15, 16, and 16, 17? So we can see kind of the plans across multiple years. But starting with where we are today, I think it would be helpful to see the.
Progression.
The progression. Thank you.
Okay, and so, the only other question I. How the, I'm looking at, my slides don't have numbers, but the ISTI Standards in Action Yeah, is, is. Is this requiring, I guess I'm just not sure I understand how big of a change in teaching method, are we requiring that teachers integrate technology into their teaching, or is it really up to the different teachers to do it as, in whatever way they see fit? Or can you just kind of maybe explain that a little bit more? Because it's, I'm looking at this observable teacher behavior, teachers demonstrate awareness and knowledge of their respective technology-integrated curriculum. So that's the question.
I would say there's, it's a two-pronged approach. So to have seven technology goals and to think that teachers are going to be implementing seven technology goals is not really viable. Is the expectation that teachers are implementing some aspect of them? Yes. I think what Jesse referred to earlier, as did I, about at the building level, what makes the most sense. Some of the standards are more easily aligned with certain levels than other levels as we go through. So for instance, Goal 7 around global citizenship. While we can all address global citizenship, there are certain curriculum areas that lend themselves to. We just met today with our language teachers, and we were talking about global citizenship as part of that program. So there are certain curriculum areas that just naturally lend themselves. So the expectation is that all teachers are addressing the technology goals, but we also understand that that's going to take, that's going to be over time. And again, more, and that's why the standards are so important, because through the standards, you'll begin, we'll begin to see which standards can be applied where, and which standards we're having trouble implementing, and we need to understand why we're having trouble implementing them. Is it training? Is it that a teacher doesn't know how to do it? Is it resources, that we don't have that many resources for a teacher at a particular level, whether it be software or subscription services? So part of it is, as a district, trying to figure out what we have that actually is viable and it works as a resource. And then where should we be looking and investigating and figuring out what else is there that we could be using or applying in our classrooms that would really integrate the technology? And not as an add-on, and I really want to, we didn't say that tonight, but we've talked a lot about that. Sometimes the teachers feel overwhelmed because it feels like I can't fit one more thing on my plate. And what we're trying to shift to is to say, we don't want you to add one more thing on your plate. We want to look at what's on that plate and rethink, where does technology have a place that would actually change the teaching and learning? Not more of the same. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, but shouldn't the goal not be to change it, but to improve it?
Exactly. Well, you have to change it to a certain degree. In other words, if we want it, if we're saying to a teacher that you can't fit one more thing on your plate, and they've been using a traditional method for teaching something, and there's a method that, where we could use technology to teach it, then they would have to change in order to do that. So technology demands change. The question is, to what degree and to ensure that it's a good choice?
Yeah, I guess to me, I'm not very comfortable with that approach. You know, I kind of think that the educational need should drive, you know, technology is a tool, and where there's a well-articulated need to, where it's the best way to improve the instruction to the students, it would make sense to use technology. But there are trade-offs, the teacher time may not necessarily, you know, it's going to take teacher time and energy and focus away from other potential ways.
So I think you're saying what I'm saying, that we want them to select the goals that are appropriate, which is why we're saying, no one's asking them to do just change for change's sake. What we're saying is, that was the point of bringing in the standards, so that we have a way to look at it to say, is this, does this make sense with this particular course, with this particular grade level? So I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, I guess I think of more of technology as the tool that can be utilized where it's useful and appropriate, rather than, I think you have it more as, it says right there, you've got seven technology goals. You really have technology as your goals, rather than as, you know.
Instruction is our goal, and then we use whatever tool we need to.
Yeah, I guess I don't see that process well set forth in these presentations, so that's, I flag that.
Yeah, I think we're speaking the same language, but we respect hearing the fact that you don't see it.
Yeah, that's.
It's something that, you know, over time, I think we'll see that alignment as this work is, becomes a part of the daily instruction.
No, and I know this is, and partly it's rhetoric, I suppose, because this is a presentation focused on technology, but I just want to make sure that the use of technology doesn't become our goal, it becomes the tool that might help us achieve goals rather than.
Technology's not being used for technology's sake in this case.
There you go.
Where it's the access resource as a more efficient way to deliver instruction or to engage children in different ways at times. Absolutely. But I think we're saying the same.
I'm done. Thank you.
Funny, no surprise, some of my things are similar to what John brought up, but again, as John said, I kind of see this as, there's almost four distinct areas. I mean, talked about, one is professional development, that's one. You know, one is technology curriculum, questions on that. This is the other piece, the integration of technology into the existing teaching, and then the hardware. So I do see this as really, it's almost four different presentations. But I'm going to start kind of where John left off because it's a big concern of mine, and it's not only a concern based on what I'm hearing tonight, but it's also based on me being a parent and what I'm seeing with my kid. And I feel like our goal is always, and I think we all agree, how to deliver the best instruction to the students. And I guess I'm almost getting a sense sometimes that there's certain technology pieces that are being laid in. I don't know why. My sense was because maybe there's a feeling that they're supposed to. I think it's at the cost of the instruction of the kids. And again, it's just, you know, grandmother research, it's kind of what I'm seeing. I'm actually feeling like in some cases, we might be, not every case, I mean, like you said, we're not going to do it for technology's sake, but I'm wondering if the teachers are getting that message. I mean, I'm wondering if the teachers are hearing, oh, I'm supposed to engineer technology, I must figure out a way to do this. And if actually that's not, if in that case where they decide they have to do it and they do it, and in fact, it would have been better not to use technology to deliver that instruction, then I think we really need to take a step back and seriously evaluate the message that we're sending to the teachers. I'm very concerned about this, actually. I just am.
And I would love to hear examples of where those concerns are coming from, because I'm pretty certain that our, that our message to teachers hasn't been anywhere in the realm of you must or we are requiring. Our efforts have been to equip teachers to be able to utilize more resources. The response that we had with respect to John's comments and questions was to be able to provide teachers with the opportunity and skill to access other information that would be able to enrich learning experiences for kids. I think in many, many cases, we're seeing teachers that are being appreciative and thankful. In my closing remarks, I spoke of teachers that, and the enthusiasm that was there, and teachers that are on the EDDT, and the feedback that they're getting from peers. And those people that are leaving these meetings and sending out resources and emails to their colleagues in their schools with enthusiasm, so.
I think there's everything. I think there's a spectrum. And I agree that it's fabulous. In certain places, it's fabulous. Probably for the majority of places, it's fabulous. But I think we need to be very mindful of the fact that our, what is our ultimate goal? And if our ultimate goal is to deliver the best instruction to the kids, then I think sometimes we need to take a look at, A, what are they teaching? How is that best delivered? And B, who is the teacher, and how do they feel most comfortable delivering that instruction? And I think the totality of it will optimize the results of what's the best for our kids. And I just, again, it's nothing we said or done, and I mean, I could talk a little bit more and tell you a little bit more where I'm seeing what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, you know, for tonight, I'm just, I just feel like we, I just hope that we're mindful of that as we're making all these decisions. I mean, I know that everybody feels that, across all of education, they feel this rush as to, how do we do this with technology, and how do we use it? And I mean, you know, we'll get there, as long as we have a plan and we have a roadmap. I don't think it's a race, and I don't think teachers should feel like it's a race either. And I just, it's a concern, especially in seeing Goal 6. It just, it seems like, you know, you're saying, you know, the teachers are going to design a digital-age learning experience, if it makes sense. Fabulous, you know? If you're teaching, I don't know, handle it, and it doesn't make sense, then not, you know, you don't have to do it. So again, it's just, I'm concerned about the message, and sometimes, not only the message, but just sometimes people don't understand the message, and they're like, oh my God, I got to do this, even though they don't. So that's, that's my, you know, my big thing in the teacher, in the.
Sorry, but there's one last thing in response that I think that, when we go to, and I don't think we need necessarily to flip to the slide, but when Jesse spoke about PD and the building-level committees, what was specifically highlighted in that slide was crafting to what teachers saw their needs to be. So we have some teachers that, we can use the high school, for example, some, there's some teachers that use chalk, and they're excellent teachers in that structure and that environment. You know, are there other ways to deliver that content? Are there other teachers in other schools, other districts doing it differently? Certainly. But you know what? That's a popular teacher that's getting great results. So are we going to go in and tell her, we want to see you using Chromebooks tomorrow, or you need to be utilizing this? We're not doing that. We're trying to give folks the tools and the skills to be able to use it where appropriate to enhance their instruction.
Right, it's enhancing, it's not necessarily replacing.
I'd just add a suggestion on to your comment, you know, one, because I had sort of thought some of the things that Robyn and John had brought up. But what, for me, it was coming down to is measurement. And in this case, it would be measuring what the teachers are actually doing. And unlike many things, that's something that you can do kind of systematically with an internal polling tool. I think you actually did it after the flipped classroom, you did some polling, right? So, but I would suggest doing kind of a district-wide or possibly school-wide, depending on doing a poll, and saying, you know, we've made these things available to you, how many, you know, are you using Chromebook? Have you ever used Chromebooks? Are you using this? Are you using that? And then you can report back to the board, which would give us some sense of the dimension of the use. And then you could, there's a way for, and it's all anonymous too, obviously, depending on the tool. And then you can get comments too, about, you know, I feel pressured into using technology, I prefer to do things the way I've always been doing it, you know? Or, I'm so excited that you're doing this, and let's do it, let's bring it on. But I think the idea of doing some kind of internal measurement, however you do it, would help make, it would help make me feel a little more comfortable. It'd give us some sense of what actually is happening at the, at the instruction level. Does that make sense to you, or?
We've always asked for some sort of measurement about, you know, what are the results and how to...
Usually we're talking measuring students. It's a little hard in this case, although that's ultimately the thing that matters. I was just thinking to get more of a snapshot around your particular point. We could try and measure teacher usage of these tools.
I just feel like teachers are nervous. I mean, I wouldn't want to make them more nervous. I just, I just feel like, and I could be wrong on this, but I feel like there's this sense that they're supposed to be including this. And, you know, some things lend themselves to it, and some things don't. And I'm hoping that there's a state, I want them to have the sense that if it makes sense, I would like to include it. And like, hopefully, working with, you know, Jesse and your team, as to where does it make sense? Not necessarily what I sense as well, you know? I guess I gotta do something, so let's just put it here.
Right, yeah, we definitely got your point there, for sure. Did you have something?
I have a, I have more.
Yeah, I know, Maria seems like she wants to talk.
Yeah, I have something that's part of this...
Is it part of the same theme?
Yeah, part of the same thing, Goal Number Six. The way I look at this is, using the example, Chromebooks in sixth grade last year, both of the math teachers in sixth grade used Chromebooks for a period of time. There were red days when they weren't using them, and they saw a lot of enthusiasm from the kids, you know, when they were using them, when they weren't using them. My concern, so that's how I see the use of technology, this is just an example. My concern is, who is overseeing teachers by grade within the subject? Like, there'll be certain grades, perhaps there's only one teacher teaching a particular subject, so how they choose to use technology within their class is fine, because everyone's going to get the same experience. But when you have multiple teachers teaching the same subject, let's say one wants to integrate technology a certain way, the other one decides not to, that's where it kind of comes into play, different experiences. They're getting the same material across theoretically, but I kind of want to know who's the final say on what they get to do within their classroom? Because I feel like fundamentally, a teacher at an elementary level, let's say, sometimes a class could be more of an auditory learning type of class. So they might modify their, the way they teach, you know, in that approach. But maybe perhaps on the upper levels, how, how do we know that the kids are getting the same experiences and that a teacher is not? I mean, do they ultimately get to choose how they want to do this? Or is the building principal overseeing it? Or is it the department chair overseeing it? Who's the ultimate approval in this process? Or is there none?
You know, I think that, as you all have actually just described, you know, teaching is an art. And certain things make sense for certain teachers in different, you know, we have certain kindergarten teachers who sing and play the piano, when we have other teachers who, we pray they don't sing for us. You know, I think, I also feel very careful and cautious here. I want us to use tools, and I want us to use them to improve teaching and learning and improve experiences for kids. I don't think we're at a place where we would want to say, everyone has to do this, or a building principal can say, you have to. For me, that's a very slippery slope because of its strategies, its skills, its approach, it's layered. So there's no one ruler who says, you have to do this or that. What we are doing though, is through our collective work around common assessments across courses, through our work in instructional design, and using a common design framework to create instruction, what we're seeing is more, a lot more, a lot more collaboration among the teachers who teach the same subject area. And we're seeing that in the elementaries for a bit, you know, for a while now, pretty much, you know, you're a fourth grade teacher, there was, you know, different experiences in the classroom, but pretty common, everyone was getting the same thing. That's been a really nice shift for us at the secondary level especially, where a lot of collaboration. So I wouldn't say there's one person saying, you have to or not have to. What we are seeing though, is that we want people sharing their approaches and their practices. And I think that what we'll see is that we have more and more teachers who really are interested. They don't always have the idea or the way, but they might have a colleague who's teaching that same course, who does have the idea and the way. So they're happy to come on board with it, even if they didn't think of it themselves. You know, we're evolving. I would hate to make it sound like we're in some ready-to-go place. So I don't know if that helps, Maria.
I guess, is there some sort of system in place that they need approval to do certain things? No?
All right, I mean, I've got a...
Related to this. If you give me an example, I don't know, I'm cautious when I say that, but... No, I don't have an example. I'm just trying to think, you know, who...
I will. I'll give you an example, because I, and I think a lot of you know I feel, I'm very concerned about it. I mean, I think the beauty of teaching is that a lot of, a lot of subjects break into units. So if you want to try something, you have a unit. It's easy to try it in a unit and see how it's done, and hopefully they'll assess it and they'll get some qualitative and quantitative data. However, when teachers in a grade decide to change the entire way they're going to deliver instruction for the entire year, and there's absolutely no measurement tools that were involved in the decision, nothing that I've heard of along the way, and for a lot of reasons, and a lot of, you know, results in the beginning, the kids were struggling with it. And then my question gets back to Maria's. It's sixth grade math, they changed how they're delivering instruction for the entire year. I mean, they said they could change it back if it's not working, but I don't understand how, as a district, when we have layers of principals and curriculum people and superintendents, that if an entire grade is going to completely change how they deliver instruction, then there wouldn't be some system of kind of management in place for that? Where there's a communication to the parents, and there's some sort of research, or, I mean, review of how was it going, and some sort of an assessment of, is it successful or not successful? And how are we going to move forward? And I've seen absolutely nothing about that.
Robyn. This isn't really...
It just, it plays right into her...
No, because it's not, because it's not the use of technology.
But it is, because a lot of the reasons they did it was, I feel like they're utilizing technology in place of the teaching. They are, they're telling them to watch videos. As some of, some of the units of teaching, the method is, there's not a teacher up there teaching, go watch this video during the course of the week.
I know, but...
That's technology, right?
But it's just, your question's not really germane tonight to...
No, but it was very germane to what Maria brought up.
But you can't expect them to necessarily address it. We're going to go down...
No, but I'm saying, I mean, Maria said, give me an example. I mean, to me, that's an example. Like, how is that managed? I mean, Maria said, how do you manage it? I mean, I'm not expecting an answer right now, but I'm at a later date. I mean, it's just, I don't, I don't, I, I'm at a loss as to how that's managed too, especially when it's broad-based like that. Again, a unit is fine, I totally agree with you. I mean, they need to have the ability to try things, but when you're talking about an entire year for an entire grade, it seems like maybe there needs to be some system set in place for all of this that we're talking about. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I just want to keep us moving along.
Okay. Okay, so my next, my next questioning is more about the curriculum, specific. And I guess I'll start with the seventh grade, when you talk about, you know, what you guys are doing as an elective. And my question to you is, and I guess it's kind of as, had a curriculum, is, as we look at the electives that the kids have, I mean, over time, I know Chris has seen this too, we definitely, as board members, get emails from parents over the past 10 years, about just looking at the electives that are offered. And some of them seem a little outdated in seventh grade, in the, you know, like sewing. I mean, they're teaching them how to sew. And then you look at these things that you guys are talking about, and, you know, and in answer to John's question, you said, well, you know, it's going to replace, it's going to be integrated into the technology unit. I mean, at some point, I guess, I wonder, would it make sense for us, since technology is so important, seems like we all agree it's important, that maybe we need to take a look at the electives that are offered in, for example, seventh grade? And maybe we need to make two of them dedicated to technology, and look at some of the ones that maybe aren't as relevant to 21st century skills, that, you know, maybe they just need to be updated. I mean, it's definitely a theme that we get emails, every year we get a couple emails saying, is this something? So...
We need to meet the state standard in the number of units that we, that we graduate eighth graders with.
Okay.
Our home and careers program is separate from technology, and it's required, the same way our technology is required, home and careers is required, health is required, so...
So you're saying all of them are required?
The electives that we offer...
We go and add a technology one and kind of take something else out?
And just to be clear about home and careers, that's narrowly defined about what home and careers has to be, because people use a lot of technology in their home, and a lot of technology in their careers these days, and, but we couldn't just re-label...
That's not what the standards require.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, it's right.
Standards require something along the lines of sewing?
So the standards, yeah. So I'm not saying that we don't have some flexibility, but I guess we do not have the flexibility to trade out a technology unit for home and careers.
I think the curriculum around home and careers, there probably, there's more flexibility around that, but we still have to have home and careers, and then...
You can't trade a unit to make you technology.
And it can't be a smart home, and the...
Might be.
I'm not defending sewing or anything else, I'm just saying, I think that the reality is that it's a required course.
Sewing machines are technology too.
Right.
Pretty fancy, too.
Yeah, sure.
Right? Pretty sophisticated.
I've never learned how to use one, it's always seemed to be on me, so...
All right, so that explains that. But moving along the lines of the same curriculum, my question about Project Lead the Way is, I would be curious, and not right now, but I would be curious to understand what you looked at, when, I'm assuming you looked at other things that you're considering besides Project Lead the Way? I mean, I've heard things about Project Lead the Way, I'm actually, I'm sure you kind of considered doing other. There's a lot of ways to integrate computers and technology into education, other than Project Lead the Way. And I would be curious to see what you looked at, and why you selected Project Lead the Way, and what you're hoping to get out of it, and how, you know, how we're going to measure it? Because, you know, I mean, to me, it's STEM, not as much of, you know, a lot of other people, it seems like are heading more toward computers and apps and things along those lines. And it seems like we're going, as John said, to biomedical science, and, I mean, I'm all for engineering electives, but if we have limited resources, the question becomes, you know, what is, what is an optimal thing to offer? And so I'm curious as to why we decided this direction, and I would like to see some information about that. And this chart that you guys have with the development of essential systems and practice, is this meaning, did you do this on purpose where professional development is the most important? And then as you go up the ladder, they're the least important? Or is that why it's a pyramid? Or are they equally important?
I mean, the professional learning sits at the foundation. I mean, I think it's interesting how people read graphics, actually. So I think in this case, the professional development sits at, you know, you have to have the professional learning. In order to do the things above it, you have to have that as your foundation. But I do think people read pyramids very differently, so I don't know if there's a right...
But then the other two might be even, because they're kind of parallel, not necessarily... Do you need to have a curriculum in order to...
Technology curriculum, we're required, it's a state, in other words, it's a baseline, we have to have it. And techno, and the curriculum integration is broader, it looks different in a lot of, and it looks, it has a different approach in different places where a technology curriculum... I, I don't know, I mean, we could change it, I don't know that it was that...
I don't think we were tiering...
When I...
Oh, okay. I was just wondering how to...
I created it in June, and so I think it was just...
And it was one of those, we thought it carried through, because it spoke to infrastructure supporting those three components, so...
Okay. Okay. Question about the think tank which you mentioned, is, are you doing anything with it this year?
So we're going to identify a date for the spring, and we're going to pull together the think tank again, provide that opportunity, and present.
For the purpose of?
Well, we'd like to, you know, that, the think tank, the first two think tanks really informed our thinking for moving forward. Again, we had a lot of voices at the table, we broke up into different groups, and I think our thinking at this point would be to pull back in those voices, share where we are, share some of our thinking and our movement since that last think tank, and then create, we're trying to create a cycle. It's a cycle of conversation and dialogue that keeps us moving and thinking. I mean, one of the things that the think tank, that one of our students so poignantly said was, you know, don't create a real long-term plan, because it's changing faster than you can plan it. And he's right. I mean, so, you know, I, from my seat, I, he's right, we can't, Jesse and I talked tonight about, you know, kids are coming in, they're doing things, they're thinking things, they're so far beyond us in some ways in their thinking. So I think this cycle of ongoing is really important, and we see the think tank as a way to keep this dialogue going in our community, in our schools, amongst our families and kids, so...
I mean, and I don't know how to accomplish this, because I know your challenge with the teacher schedules and the community member schedules, but I feel like in the first think tank, you know, we talked about this, some of the best insights came from some people who work in the, and a lot of them weren't able to come to the second one because of the timing of the meeting. It was like four in the afternoon, and I know you were doing that to accommodate the teachers, but maybe there's a way to do two. I mean, these, these guys really, I mean, they're not people who are generally involved, so we don't usually hear their voices, and they were so insightful and so helpful, that I really hope we find a way to continue to engage those people from the first one, in addition to everybody else. Let's see. Oh, I know. I have a question about the Google, where we're going, Google Apps and EdLine. Good old EdLine. Is there a way to take, for example, the homework posting, is there a way to perhaps take some of these things off of EdLine and put them in a place like, like house things on Google? I don't know.
So, it talks to me a while, so I didn't realize it was loud. Google Classroom is Google's version of a learning management system that they just rolled out over the summer. And we've had teachers start to use that, but it's not, actually, almost in, almost no districts I know of is it pervasively being used, because it's still new, and we've actually started to develop training sessions around that. But I think we're still exploring long-term options for where we're going to be housing assignment information, but actually, if you look to the standards that were developed, the posting standards and guidelines that were developed, that actually gives a more focused area for where information should be posted, in terms of the systems we currently have. But we're obviously exploring all of our long-term solutions for where we can, you know, what our best options are as far as...
For EdLine, right. I mean, EdLine's never been the ideal...
Right. So I think the way the, the standards read now is that you can post something on a system other than EdLine, provided that you're just pointing to that from EdLine. So at least, there's a, a starting point for anyone to go look for information on any system.
So are those stand, those guidelines, has that been rolled out to the teachers?
It's been rolled out to the buildings, and we're still in the process of implementation at the elementary level, but at the high school level, I know it's been rolled out, and the middle school.
What guidelines? What do you mean?
The...
The ones to where homework is going to be posted. That we develop.
Posting protocols?
That's, that was actually one of my questions.
Segue.
So when we, when it was first discussed, you know, Jesse's position and the new role and some of your responsibilities, I remember one of the things that you spoke about was getting some teachers who aren't currently using, and this is more at the upper level, the secondary level, not the elementary level, those teachers who aren't comfortable with Home Access and/or Edline, why they aren't, getting them on board, that we kind of all agreed that there should be some sort of standard, you know, all students should know, you go to Edline for homework, you go to Home Access for homework, you go, I've, I haven't been seeing that, and comments I've been getting, you know, around, I'm kind of curious, where are those guidelines?
So actually, that is articulated in the, in the protocols, in terms of where students and parents or anyone can go to find assignment information, whether or not it's being, whether or not we need to take a look and make sure that it's being fully implemented the way it's articulated in the protocols, I think is a separate thing, but that was actually one of the key areas of focus when we developed those, was to address that issue of inconsistencies with where information was being posted.
And so where, where should it be posted?
Ultimately, Edline is the, is the root.
The main root.
So what, they don't have to post assignment information at Edline, they can post it in Home Access Center, or on some other system that they're using, provided that they provide a link to that resource through Edline. So ultimately, when a student logs into Edline, or a parent logs into Edline and checks their student information, they can go to a course page and be directed to the correct resource for that, as opposed to what we had previously, which was, you know, a little bit of no man's land, where I'm going to have to kind of guess where I have to go. So as long as you're pointing to the correct resource, a teacher can, has some discretion as to where they can post that information.
So then the expectation is, is if a teacher assigns a homework assignment, it's supposed to be on Edline for that evening?
Or it's supposed to be pointing to the resource for work that information will...
Right, right, but there's something on, there's a link, or the information is somewhere on Edline, on their page for that particular subject, pointing them in the direction where the homework is.
The only clarification I would make is, if I'm using a resource like Google Classroom or Home Access Center, and I know that I'm going to be continuously posting information there, I can provide a link to that resource initially and say, all of my assignment information will be posted on Home Access Center. I won't be updating everything on a daily basis.
The link is still there.
Yes.
The link is still there, and a perfect example is Mr. Levine. Mr. Levine has an outside website, and that's where he edits, but from Edline, his link is there for homework assignments here, and you redirect it.
So the one thing I want to say, in looking at the, Jesse talking about the role it'll be a process, you know, the protocols have been introduced, they've been vetted, we had focus groups at each building this fall, we tweaked it based upon feedback from them. So at the elementary school, there's, there's needs for tech support and workshops that Jesse's providing. When we talk about Jesse's new and expanded role, the one thing that I want to note and kind of remind everybody, tonight, you just hired that person, that, so we've been going through the complicated process of creating that additional support position.
Thank you, by the way.
We've done so many, many things along the way, but we haven't introduced that layer of support. Lisa Torcia walks in the, in the building tomorrow. So when we're talking about that, that transition to start to free Jesse up for more of that coaching and technology leadership work, this is the critical piece, in being able to have someone take some of that data roll off of his desk now.
But let me ask you a question, for a teacher who's been in the district for a period of time, we've been using Edline forever, is it so unreasonable to think that they should know how to post assignments on a daily basis, if they give assignments on a daily basis on Edline?
I don't know.
Secondary level?
You really...
Is that an expectation? Okay.
That should be an expectation.
Okay.
Robin, were you done?
No.
Yep.
Sorry. Question about iPads, did we buy, went to iPads and piloted them when we were doing Chromebooks also, didn't one or two classes have iPads?
Not a class, but there was a set of iPad carts purchased, it was through a grant?
Dazzlane.
Dazzlane.
Correct.
Yes.
So they've been, they've been used at, and chime in, but certainly have been used regularly, but there's limitations when you have an iPad, and you don't have a true wireless environment as well. So they're being driven as best they can by the apps that we've purchased and downloaded on them, but we've been...
And there's a, yeah, there's a wireless access point which then needs to be, it's...
They're in Dazzlane.
Right, but actually, one of my goals for the new expanded role is to begin to work with Dazzlane on, on how they can expand their use of those devices and determine whether there's, I guess, a future for what that looks like in the grand scheme of planning for Dazzlane.
Yeah, just that, in terms of hardware, I knew we had them somewhere.
That's included under the additional device, in other words, in the infrastructure numbers that were there, those were accounted for.
Okay.
Under the additional...
Under mobile devices, so some were, some of the Chromebooks and some of the iPads.
Right, we had those devices, though, at the time of the last presentation, so those weren't new numbers, those were already included in there.
Okay. My next question is about smart boards, given all of this technology, and given where everything's headed, do we really need to keep refreshing and paying for these smart boards and every year replenishing the old ones and paying for the bulbs and whatever else, whatever costs are affiliated with that, or are we kind of moving beyond that?
Well, I guess I want to, you know, and I referred to this earlier, I think we're trying to take a new approach. There was a time when it was a model, every class had to have, and I think we are really so shifting from that.
Right.
And we're really looking at who needs what.
Okay.
Do some of our classes still need smart boards? Absolutely. If you go into our elementary classrooms and some of our middle school classrooms, it is part and parcel, they're, not only have they developed an incredible number of lessons and units with smart board files that would all have to be redone without using a smart board, but it is, it is part of everything that they've been teaching and using. We have other classrooms where you walk in and they're basically using it as a screen for the projector. So we're very in tune to that right now, and part of our assessment, Jesse and I are doing a building walkthrough in every building with the administrators, part of that is to start to look at, what do, what do our teachers really need? We implemented last year, for very little money, we put a document camera in almost every classroom. They're this big, I can't tell you how many classrooms that I walk into and they're being used. We did like minimal training if someone needed it, I mean, you could basically turn on, put something on, but the teachers have found that to be an incredible resource, an incredible tool, because they, they take students' work, and they're talking about something, and they want to show what a student did, and they don't have to scan it, they don't have to do anything, they just put it under the document camera, and now it's up on the screen.
Oh, wow.
So here's something that was like a...
It's like an overhead projector!
A $50 tool.
We've come a long way.
Less than $100, and they actually double as a webcam also, so we gave our teachers the ability to connect with them, some of our teachers have used those devices to connect, bring authors into the classroom, things like that. The cost was very little, and I think when you look at experiences like that, that's kind of what shaped our thinking with regards to future technology purchasing. So is there a place for smart boards in the district? Yes, but I think our attitude has changed with regards to what a traditional, or I don't want to say traditional, but what a classroom should look like. I think that, you know, there's a lot of variations, and we're really trying to address district goals as well as individual teacher needs.
So for this year's coming budget, is your intention that you're going to kind of figure out how many we need to replace, or we're just going to replace it and they're going to take it, like, we need another year to kind of figure out if we start ratcheting down, or you haven't figured that out yet? You could say that, it's fine, too, I don't...
I guess, because this was actually our January conversation with the ETD team. So one of the things that we're trying to figure out is, how do we create some models so teachers can see the different models?
Okay.
And figure out, well, what does make sense for me?
Okay.
So I think to, I think we're not sure yet, but I think we're very much on the same page that we need to be thinking very differently in terms of that.
The other piece I would just add is, similar to, with the desktop conversation, we're trying to give ourselves this one-year buffer where we're not making any major investment in new technologies, so to speak. We do have, we are kind of in a weird place with the smart boards, in that we're reaching the end of life of that large number that we purchased with the grant that we received from Senator Spano approximately 10 years ago. So we're, while smart board replacements are built into next year, we're really looking at not new installations, but replacements of any machines that are, machine, smart boards that are currently failing, as opposed to looking to build any new installations until we have a sense of where, where we're going.
Right. Okay. No, I'm glad that that's part of the whole conversation. Just a couple more questions. I guess another budget question, and I'm sure this will come up in the budget, but I, you know, I'm worried, because it sounds like it's pretty intensive, is this whole Project Lead the Way initiative that you guys are proposing, obviously, you said there's a lot of intensive teacher training, I'm assuming there's costs associated with it, I'm assuming there's, there's teacher hires associated with it? No? Okay, so again, I mean, I'm hoping that when we get to the budget discussions, the costs associated with it are pretty clearly laid out for us, because again, as I said, there's clearly other ways to go. So, you know, the rationale and the cost and other options and what they will cost, I just, the comparisons, it would all be interesting and helpful, I think, as we get to budget discussions. And then I have one more question, which is, just a small question, which is, you talk about all the building-level technology committees, how big are all of these committees? Like, how many people are on a building-level technology committee?
I would say it depends on the building, I would say anywhere from maybe 6 to 10.
6 to 10 people?
6 to 10 people.
So always like someone in, every grade has a rep, or...
Well, that's what I was going to say, you know, it depends, you know, it, yes, so I think the goal is, for instance, I know at the high school, they were trying to develop a committee that at least had depart, like, a representation from every department, whether they were able to get that or not, I'm not so sure yet.
Okay.
I know Dave and Deb are working on that. Main Street School, certainly, building-level, and Dazzlane, you want grade-level representation, you also want representation from your special areas, so it's, it's a range. We also have had a focus that has lost its way a little bit around assistive technology, and so we also want to include teachers who are part of, you know, PPS, support-type teachers, in the, on the committees as well, so in some buildings, they'll have someone like that, somebody who's a school psychologist. It varies from one building to the next.
Okay. And then, I mean, maybe it's just the buzzword, but it seems like most people, when they talk about what to include in a curriculum, coding and apps seem to come up a lot, and I'm curious as to where we're thinking, what you're thinking about that. I mean, you talk about Project Lead the Way, but that's clearly a different direction than coding and apps, so what is the thinking about that?
There was a reference on that slide, actually, to Advanced Placement Computer Programming, which, yeah.
Yeah, but it seemed to me that you, these were all things that were just, that was actually one of my questions. So on this screen, it was all kinds of just possibilities, but it looked like you settled on the biomedical science. We haven't settled on anything. We're trying to find avenues where we don't feel we have something yet. So if I go back to the middle school for one second, the reason we focused on that, you have, those are the foundation units, the reason we went to design and modeling is because we have robotics. At the high school level, we do have computer programming, we do have computer courses already, so we felt like if we wanted to be expanding, and we have, and really, we have settled on, we really are in development of our thinking to make sure that we are doing what makes sense, that this is the way to go. So, so when we looked at the biomedical science, we're starting to look at, well, where do we see interest in kids, you know, and Dave and Patsy, we're both at the conference as well, Dave Kohn, so they're talking about, you know, where do they see, what are the interests? So we're offering the engineering, so do we stay away from the biomedical science right now and really build out engineering? Is that a way to go? We also are trying to be aware and mindful of where our staffing is, and where, no, you know, our budget is going to be difficult, so...
You know, as a board member, I just, I'm sorry, but to interrupt them at one point, I mean, you know, especially, you know, we talk a lot about long-term planning, that's where we are in it, but, like, if there was something that you felt was optimal for, for you guys to say, well, we're not going to go that way, because we know that our budget's tight, I mean, it would be helpful to share that information, and then maybe it's just together, we can come up with a long-term solution to get there, as opposed to just saying, we're going, you know, you two saying, we're going this way because we know that we could afford it.
Let me just finish what I was going to say, because we're not there yet, we might, you're saying what I'm saying, so when we looked at our engineering and we talked about building it out, one of the things that Dave Kohn is really looking at is, how is the high school scheduled? Well, how many kids are we getting in each? Should we be running these by semester? So that's what I was referring to earlier, we're looking and exploring everything, but it is also our job to look at the staffing, so if we do come forward to you, we're clear on, this is why we're asking for this staffing request, and we're, we're laying it out for you in a comprehensive, thoughtful way. So some of what we're looking at is, where would staffing needs be? So we may need a Plan A and a Plan B, so that you can look at what the different options are, but we're also looking at where we're seeing interest from our students. So let me just give you an example of the biomedical. One of the pieces around that is, what Dave Kohn was talking about was the fact that we are required to have a lab connected, right, to our biology group, right, so the kids take a period and a lab. Well, there may be ways to embed some of this as part of that work. So there's a lot of opportunity here and a lot of different ways to go, it's not necessarily just a clean, here's this course and take it. So that's where, you know, and we'll give you more information on that, but I would just ask you to trust, we are looking at this in lots of different ways, all with the goal of how are we providing opportunity for our students, how are we expanding our program over time, so that we feel that it is thoughtful and creates sequences for students.
Right. So along those lines, and I know we've never done this before, but when you talk about expanding the program over time, I actually think it might be very useful for the board if we were maybe to look at some things, especially in this area, as a kind of a few years out, like, maybe it's not just giving us a proposal for this budget year.
Right.
Maybe it's giving us a proposal for, you know, like, you guys and Dave and Chris come back and say, here's where we need to, you know, here's where we want to go, I don't know, I mean, I know things change, but arguably, you know, three years out, here's where we see it kind of rolling, and, and that way we can make it work, as opposed to, because this, every year is so difficult for everybody, and I know we've never done that, but maybe this is a good time to start, just a thought as you're talking, so...
A multi-year plan. Right? A multi-year plan.
Yeah, yeah, especially, maybe not every year, but something like this.
That's a point exactly what this is, so if this is the model that we pursue, that you have to build out a program and a sequence over time, so that, that would be the, there would be steps that you would have to invest in developing other courses, and potentially additional staff, assuming we're able to get the student enrollment to support.
Right, but presented to the board as, from a numbers perspective, as that, so that it's not like we're just committing for this year, and then, okay, as we always do, start again with the next year, which is so hard to do for everybody, all of us, that, you know, it would, might, it might be easier. Again, we've never done it before, but maybe there's, this is a good way to start.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Maria?
I think between your questions, I'm just looking to make sure all my notes have been answered. Do you have any questions you can ask?
Well, it's, at this point, it's more of just comments on the, piggybacking on what Robin and John said. I agree with John very much that I think if we're considering STEM in particular, that, or maybe it's STEM as a whole, we do have to consider math and science curriculum within our thinking about STEM. So once we start thinking about technology as part of STEM, and we think about what the objectives, going back to our vision statement, are, that, you know, we have a real responsibility as a school board to be looking at math and science as part of STEM, and whether or not that curriculum is as strong, or the instruction is strong as it needs to be. And I just wanted to kind of echo that, because I think it, John hit the nail on the head, it's very much tied into what the vision is. The vision is preparing kids for engineering programs in college, that requires a level of rigor in mathematics and science now, that maybe this program is, it's not designed to do, or perhaps it is, but I just wanted to echo that. I also think, I had exactly the same question as Robin about PT LW, is that, that, you know, is that the best program for us? And it would be wonderful to hear, you know, your point of view about what are the other things you looked at. And I think, again, Robin's last point, which is that, you know, if that program was chosen because it seems affordable, then I think it just, like, you know, when you buy a car or anything else, you want to know, well, what was the more expensive thing that I decided not to spend my money on? I'd love to know what those more expensive solutions are, you know, and indeed, you know, do we even need to have this kind of a program? Does it have to be an out-of-the-box kind of Project Lead the Way program, or is it something that we can design ourselves? I mean, what's the, what's the benefit of using a third party? I guess it's, the benefit must be, because the curriculum is already designed, but again, I would go back to the first question, which is, you know, how do we know this is the best curriculum for Irvington, especially considering... best curriculum for Irvington, especially considering, you know, the importance of the investment that we're making here, and the rigor that we want to have in our overall program? Is this the most rigorous curriculum that we could be going? And then finally, I think the point about looking at it over multi-year, again, is very smart, because I think, you know, this, this is something we're clearly not going to be able to build in its entirety next year, and so knowing where we're going will also ensure that if we're allocating, and I'm making a number up, $150,000 for next year, that the following year, we're going to have to allocate $300,000, whatever the number is, because we're actually going to have to hire, you know, an additional computer science teacher in order to fulfill our overall program in 16, 17. So I think looking at over multiple, multiple years is really important.
I, I, I too wondered about the program Project Lead the Way, how did you guys come up with, I'm not saying I have a problem with it, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just curious, how did you guys come to that decision to use that program as a model to build out the curriculum?
I think mostly because our experience with them and with how they've built it out, there aren't many other things that we've found that has such a comprehensive approach to a K-12 implementation. We've had, even though we've kept it small, our goal was always to make it to grow more of a sequence at the high school level, and our experience with them has been, with them as a company and their connection to RIT has been really all very positive and very, they're very supportive, our students' success rate has been great, so for us, in looking, we have not really identified another K-12 approach that we thought would, would match this. We also, the reason that we went to Saratoga in December was to say, is this something that's viable or not? Maybe we just want to build it out at the high school level, you know, you don't have to build it out starting at the elementary level, but we also recognize that we do have, the way that they've designed their program is, it is so aligned with some of our elementary science, so I referred to that earlier, that clearly those science units could become the science units that the fourth-grade teachers are doing, for instance, which would allow our technology program to continue to expand, so, and, so, you know, we'd love to share that bigger picture, because for us, it's like an onion, and we're going to keep on developing and peeling off a layer, so that over time, we're really supporting all levels. So this was just a nice starting point for us, but in terms of PLTW, it is extremely well-developed, and we actually saw in action at all levels, the, the launch program, the gateway program, as well as the high school.
Can I add one, one thought? So at the very beginning of the presentation, I know Dr. Harrison had mentioned that one of our goals is to provide students with rich experiences to prepare them for the future, and I know John had talked about career readiness, and oftentimes, that future nowadays deals with careers that don't exist, so we're trying to prepare them for things that we don't know what they're going to look like. We had an opportunity at the end of the day, at the Project Lead the Way conference, myself, David Cohen and David Sotow, to sit in on a session with students who had graduated through their program, who had graduated Saratoga Springs High School, having gone through the Project Lead the Way program, and then gone to college, graduated college, and then went into industry, and when they came back and shared with us their preparation and how well-prepared they were for their college programs because of the education they got in their Project Lead the Way programs, and how much of an edge it gave them off over their peers, and how prepared they were for the workforce, and how the challenges they were facing in their careers were really directly correlated to work they did in high school. I mean, I don't think anyone walked out of the room saying, you know, this isn't, this, we all walked out saying, this is the right thing to do for our students, and it really tied directly with the goals that we're putting forth for our students, so, you know, if we weren't convinced through the whole day of seeing students in action, I think that really, you know, brought it home for us.
May I, may I offer a response to that, please? You know, there's another way to, I think, another way philosophically to approach this, which I guess is kind of the approach of liberal arts education, right, which is that you offer students a very strong, solid grounding in, among other things, math and science, among other things, and really strong critical thinking skills, you really push them, you give the strong students every opportunity to reach for greater learning, greater achievement, and all the rest, and with all of those, that grounding, who cares what the future brings? The future will be governed and determined by the people who have that solid grounding, and I think it's important that we focus on giving them that grounding and, and not be too caught up in other things.
So the strength of the Project Lead the Way, their whole premise, and, and we have plenty of materials that I think we'd love to share with you, because I think it speaks to a lot of what you're talking about tonight, the whole premise is thinking, that's what those units are, and, you know, we've seen a tremendous, I know Joyce just started Destination Imagination at the, at Main Street School as a club, and it was, she was amazed at how many kids were interested in that. It's all about thinking, and that's really at the heart of those skills that you're right, we don't know.
Although, yeah.
That's the appeal.
Presumably, whatever we have kids doing in school, they're thinking, so it's, we can change what we're thinking, but, you know, I guess I'm, I, I've said it before, I'll just, you know, so I don't need to repeat myself, but I just, my concern is that we're, we're not adequately focusing on the core areas of our curriculum in, you know, in this process. That's all. Any other questions?
Okay. We done? That was a long presentation with a long Q and A.
Yeah, the presentation wasn't so long. Don't blame it on them. An even longer Q and A, all right. So, our policy committee, committee update, which is the liaison report, who is delivering that tonight? Mr. Montgomery, Ms. Cashman?
Do you want me to give an overview when you get in?
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah, I'll have a different perspective, undoubtedly, so you can go ahead.
You'll have a different perspective? I hope not.
What?
I hope not.
You don't think I'll have a different perspective than you?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well, good, I'm really, I'm very interested to hear your perspective.
I'm curious. Very intriguing, actually. I can't access...
Wasn't there a PowerPoint? In the, in the agenda, there's PowerPoint that came with the committee.
Yeah, there was, that was, we were, we were given a PowerPoint presentation by the New York State School Board.
Oh, I thought you were going to talk through that.
Now, feel free to look through the PowerPoint presentation.
I did, I was like, they're really going to present.
Refresh my memory, Debbie was her name?
Linda Baske.
Linda Baske, okay. Debbie was the one that was supposed to come?
No, that was Jessica.
Oh, see, I'm sorry.
It was Debbie, then.
I don't know, I have a Debbie in my head. A NISBA representative came to our meeting, this was the first meeting, I believe, of the year with the NISBA representative, to, remember, we were, it was part of the budget discussions last year that we were about to embark on an 18-month schedule to update our policy manual, so that was what her presentation was about.
Okay.
Also, her desire for us to change our numbers, to make it in alignment, like the way we code our policies.
To match.
And make them kind of match NISBA's way, the way they number and a lot of school districts. That was the crux of the, the meeting, we had some policies that we started to review, and we have some comments on, and we had some questions about what was legal, what was mandatory to have in, in these policies, we were looking, all the policies we were reviewing for that meeting that we did not get through were all policies that have had regulation changes or the law has changed. We haven't really started the review process of the manual. And we had some philosophical questions and discussions about what's legally required, what's, is this language required, what's not required, regulation versus law, those kinds of questions. We had some edits to some policies, we were, we'll get them sometime next week, and then I think we set aside some time...
We'll have a meeting in a couple of weeks.
In a couple of weeks, to go through all of the policies that we were supposed to review.
All these, this new four or five or whatever.
Right.
Six policies, some of which were incredibly detailed, so we'll have to, and apparently they need to be detailed, like...
The wellness one.
The wellness thing, yeah.
One of them, very detailed.
The regulation.
Well, it's the school...
What is required to be in that policy, what is not, because some of it was very detailed.
Okay, well, that brings up, I guess, the perspective I had, which I, you know, asked in, in our little meeting, is, is, I just feel like it's important, as I approach this, to understand what, what we're required to have in policy versus what we basically, as a school board, have discretion over putting in policy or not putting in policy. When you think about policy as being the way that the community acting through the school board puts its particular stamp on its, its local stamp on its schools, we want to know what our, our capacity for decision-making is on that, and, so that'll be a, something that we'll have to devote effort to.
And she also, she also said that she would mark it, on, on some of, some of our policies, it was marked, it had like little notes, you know, what was required by law, what was the new regulation, and she said she would try to be more clear going forward about those changes, the recommended changes, as to why.
Yeah, okay, so...
Right?
I mean, and I think it's a good start to the process, and we'll...
Mr. Productor, first, Katie.
I, I agree, yeah.
Were we on the same page, or, you know?
Yeah, 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 no, we are, it's, it's, I'm, I'm operating on very little sleep, sorry. Thank you for your comments, thank you to the policy committee, some of whose members are acting. All right, so that concludes our substantive meeting, we have no community comments or questions. Do we have any board discussion after all of that board discussion? No. And I just, then, I want to remind people that in our next meeting, which is coming up on January 27th, it's a very important meeting, so if you're still watching, which I would presume you're not, please take note of it, because our building principals and other administrators, or just building principals?
We'll have our administrative team here, it's going to be a two-part meeting, we'll have a little bit of business.
Okay, yep, all right.
A little bit of business.
Yep.
And we're going to try our firsthand, and it may, it's an experiment with us, that we're going to have some conversation about how we measure student success in our schools, talking about different measures of assessment. So we'll have a dialogue on the process of creating the format over the next week, and looking at a couple guiding questions, and from those questions, our principals will answer some questions, share some experiences from their schools, and then we're also going to have a joint presentation from the administrative team, whereby building leaders, department leaders are going to give some updates on their work this year, and begin to foreshadow what their direction is going to be for next year, which I think starts to lead into, you know, budgetary requests.
Right, well, that was, what I was going to say is that it's the, really the kickoff in a informal way to the budget process, because that's when we start hearing from the building principals about what their wishes are for next year in terms of new programs that might impact the budget. The, the presentation we didn't have in December, are we going, are we going to have that at some point? And has that been, when has that?
It hasn't been scheduled yet, but...
It's scheduled, we thought we...
Probably the end of June.
Yeah.
Or, or, not the end of June, but after the budget process.
Really? Because I, I, I mean, if it mattered to have it then, I mean, it seems like a long time to wait.
What presentation was that?
I don't know, it was under...
Instructional, instructional design.
John, I hear your request, why don't we take that offline? I mean, because you're saying, let's just try and get it scheduled sooner.
Yeah, I'd hate to see all that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
So, at this point, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn back into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.